Let's call our council work session order. Madam President, would you be the role please?
Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Lind. Mr. Amis.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Weller.
Here.
Motion to approve the agendas proposed.
Second.
Okay, motion to second on the agenda. Any questions or discussion? Very none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign, and motion passes. So today we have a presentation by Buxton Inc. on retail information. Noel, I understand you're in charge of this.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. We've been looking at different methods to try and attract new businesses to Waterloo. We came across in meeting with Buxton, I know they've been here to present to you before, but I think we actually had three different council people at that time and a different mayor, so we thought it would be worthwhile to have another work session. Dennis is with the Buxton Company, and he can go through the details of how they help partner with cities to bring new information, to try and attract new retail, new businesses of all types to cities.
Well, good afternoon. I appreciate you guys allowing me to be here today, present to all of you about a strategic, proactive plan to attracting the best sustainable retailers for Waterloo. What I want to touch on first off is really the main focus. A lot of times retail is overlooked when it comes to economic development. So there's a few things I want to hit on that are going to show a little bit more of the impact that retail actually does have on the economy, and maybe able to paint a little bit better picture of why it's important for that work-play-live atmosphere within a community. Instead of people traveling into work and then leave, and vice versa, just try to have a one-stop-shop, really well-tuned economic development plan. So, really, economic development with the retail strategy is to improve that quality of life for your current and future citizens, but also help strengthen, retain existing businesses. But most of all, what we're talking about today is identifying what retailers are truly the best fit for sustainability in some of the markets that you have here at Waterloo. So, we could be looking at a number of different areas. I know as I came in from downtown, there's some areas by the convention center and some of those storefronts that have a little bit of vacancies. I did notice the redevelopment that we'll be having at the plaza here soon, as some of that's torn down. But identify what type of retailers would be a good fit as their strategic plan is 12 to 18 months out is what retailers are typically looking at, sometimes even 24 months. So there's some tools, we could identify what retailers are the best fit, but then also some healthcare products that we have to help identify what type of doctors or healthcare needs there are as well. But first, I want to touch on some of the highlights for Iowa and the national average on a few things. So, in the U.S., our unemployment rate is at 4.9. As of July, here in Iowa, it's 4.1, so you're well below that national average, which is a great thing because retail follows jobs. And the reason for that is, when people are employed, they have money to spend, and as the economy's strengthening, they have more of that extra funds to go bowling, go to the movie theaters, going out dining, and be able to really take advantage of some of the goods and services within a community. But as you can see here, retail alone across the U.S. creates 42 million jobs and $2.8 trillion of our GDP, so that's a significant number. Iowa has over 43,000 retail establishments, which is obviously creating a significant amount of jobs. As you can see here, there are actually, there's almost a half a million jobs off of retail. To kind of give you an idea, in the last 12 months from retail as well, and it's strengthening and growing, there's almost a quarter million new jobs in the last 12 months just in retail alone. So retail is expanding and growing significantly. So I just kind of wanted to throw up a few things up there, just to kind of give you an idea of why retail is important when it comes to an economic development plan. Even the smaller retailers are important because they are truly the backbone of where we are today, the entrepreneurs, and I could share some insights on how we can help them move forward with confidence on starting their own type concept as well. So, here at Buxton, there's a number of different things that we're able to help the city with. Number one, we're obviously talking about economic development. That's probably the main reason why we're here, so I'll just touch on some of these others. But city services. We work with Fort Worth Library to help understand who's coming in, checking out books, or using their resources, and then where do they go home to? Where do more people look just like them that the library can attract into the community? But planning insights, new movers, as your community's growing, as we know you are here, what does that look like? What type of individuals are growing and moving into the community and over time? How are those changing and to be able to prepare for that? Visitors and tourism. We have many tools that help identify who your core visitors are. Where are they coming from? What are they coming here for? How do they spend their money? When they go home, what do they spend their money on? So what type of items can be attractive here to those type of tourists? But on top of that, identifying the core tourists that come here, and then understanding where more that look just like those ideal tourists are that we could actually market to to help that number grow as well. And then healthcare needs. Healthcare needs is actually under a part of our retail aspect of what we do, so what we're talking about today in economic development. But we have tools that we're able to leverage to identify what are the needs in the community from a healthcare standpoint. So, is there a high cardiac rate? Is there enough doctors to help those cardiac numbers? Is it dentistry? Is it pediatrics? What's underserved in a community today? And what type of healthcare offices can we offer and attract and put the validation behind it to attract those type of facilities? So is it a freestanding emergency room? There's any number of types of healthcare that we could look at. So, really looking at where the hospital is and the new development going around there, we could really share some positive insights on what type of healthcare would be best suited for that area. And sustain, obviously, that's what we want to focus on more than anything is sustainability. So, now to give you an idea about Buxton for some of you that are new faces that I haven't met before, we've been around for over 20 years, and we are the trusted advisors now to over 3,000 retailers, anywhere from emerging concepts to Fortune 100 companies. So what we do for them is, we are the largest aggregator of consumer analytic data in the nation. There's just nobody else out there that has a breadth and depth of information on how people live their lives and spend their money on a daily basis. And so what they do is they leverage that to understand who their core customers are, where more that look just like them are located, to open their new home run locations. So, on a C-suite level, these retailers like Trader Joe's, or Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, FedEx, Marriott Properties, they lean on Buxton to make those multimillion-dollar site location decisions. So that's really the backbone of what we do, is we're their strategic, the firm behind their strategic growth. Trader Joe's, for example, I like using this one because they started out of California. They really started to saturate that market, and they knew if they were going to expand, they had to start looking at other regions. But they didn't know exactly where to look or where those customers were outside of California, and that's when they leaned on Buxton to help with just that. And as you can see, they're in Chicago, and Dallas, and Atlanta, they're all over the place now, they're growing significantly. But that's what we help retailers do, and hotels, and even hospitals, is really grow their brand. So, to kind of give you an idea of the impact that Buxton has on retail, in the last 12 months, our partners, our retail partners evaluated over 30, or I'm sorry, 80,000 sites across the country, in which 7,500 brick-and-mortar stores were open. So I shared this for a couple reasons. Number one is that it's very competitive. If a retailer's looking at Waterloo, they're looking at 10 to 12 other locations as well. So what's going to put you on the map? What's going to make you stand out versus those neighboring communities out there? Another thing I like to touch on as a whole, across the country, in those last 12 months, there was 30,000 retail stores opened nationally. So, when you do the quick math, Buxton had a significant role in 25% of all retail opened in the last 12 months. So we are a major player. We know retail. We know what retailers are looking for, what makes them tick, so we can speak their lingo. That's what we're going to do, is help teach you guys as well as to view your community through the lens, or an eye of a retailer. Retailer, sorry. So we've done this now for over 800 communities as well. Anywhere from less than 2,000 in population to major verticals out there, all different objectives, whether it's redevelopment, new development, focusing on downtowns, it's, we've seen the significant variation of different objectives and goals. So I'm very confident we could help with yours. I've talked to Noel now for well over a year about this and doing our due diligence, and I know he's done his due diligence of seeing what other options are out there, and that's what led us here today. But, I'm very confident we'd be able to help you guys through the process as well. And now what I'll do is just kind of, a little bit behind us, is we're highly recognized for the work that we've done in the public and private sector. We've gotten many accolades, and I've used this term last time I was here. I shared this more than anything, just so you understand we're not two guys working out of a garage. We are a major firm. We have over 130 highly qualified employees working on our clients' behalf. So we do know retail, and we are the premier firm in the marketplace. So what we're going to do today is talk about more economic development in retail. What we want to do is understand what retailers are truly the best fit for Waterloo, but currently aren't here, and then be able to proactively approach them or recruit them into your community. So not take that wait-and-see approach. This way you could take advantage of having a vision that you can execute, something in mind. Instead of waiting for a tattoo parlor, or a cash advance shop, or something like that, some of the things that, you know, are popping up in some areas all over the place. Sure, they're deemed necessary, but an abundance of them may not be necessary. So what we could do is control where those are going, what type of concepts are going where, to really identify that vision. So, the next thing we want to do is retain those existing businesses. So some of those businesses that were downtown that I see some vacancies in, what were those before? And be able to see, okay, what other shops out there can we help strengthen so they don't have the vacancies as well? Is there a local bar and grill that we could help them understand? What are the top five beers that are going to be consumed in the market? What are the top five bourbons, so they're not wasting inventory on other bourbons that aren't going to be consumed and just collecting dust? Is there stores that are, say, that there's families going into and their kids, are they running around in Huggies or Pampers? So really understanding consumer preferences, and being able to get those items in front of that market. You see this every single day, you go to one Walmart that you're used to going to, you know where everything is, and then you go to another location, they essentially have the same products, but you can't find anything because they're allocated differently. They cater to that specific community. And with our information that we have and our preferences, your smaller stores would be able to do the exact same thing. They'd be able to cater to the specific customers in your community and what their preferences are. So really taking the guesswork out of it, but then also looking at things like, how do they like to be marketed to? Is they emailed coupon? Is it a radio ad? If it's a radio ad, what type of music do they listen to? There's a number of different things that we could do and leverage to help those existing businesses strengthen, help them understand where their customer base is coming from. So it's not just focusing on new retail, even though that's a big part of it, but we want to strengthen those existing ones as well. Show those existing retailers that Waterloo does care, and that they're there to support them. So ultimately, like I touched on, is thinking like a retailer, viewing your community like a retailer does, and that's just getting past basic demographics. Majority of the time, this is the only information that communities have access to, but your income, age, marital status, it's just basic demographic information, is what they approach retailers with. And retailers look at it and say, you know what? This information here, and all these households, all these black dots represent households that have exact same demographic. This information doesn't tell me, are they going to dine in my restaurant? Are they going to shop in my store? So to them, it's not actionable. So now through our consumer behavior data, our consumer analytics, you're able to identify some traits behind those individuals. So now that you have Ben Shaw, you can see, he likes to shop at Sam's Club, he drives a pickup truck, eats at Chili's, has one child. On the other hand, Tom King, he shops at Costco, drives a luxury car, spends a little more money at Peaches Chang's, right? So if I'm a movie theater looking to move into Waterloo, I could look at these two individuals and say, okay, Ben Shaw, he enjoys movies, but unfortunately, he enjoys them in the comfort of his own home. So he's not my core customer. Likely his child is little, so he doesn't get out of the house much, right? But on the other hand, Tom King prefers going to the movies 1.1 times a month, and is highly likely to bring his three children. So now we've identified more of those core customers, and you can see on the map, all those red dots represent those number one customers for that movie theater concept. You could even do your number two customers, your number three customers by placing a yellow dot or a blue dot, to be able to paint that picture to those retailers and be able to quantify, yes, I have enough of those core customers that are going to keep me in business for the long term. And that's what we have to do, is be able to sell Waterloo based off having the right customers for those retail concepts out there. So, the next thing I want to do is touch on how we know this. We virtually have information on every single household across America, over 130 million households, up to seven individuals per household, down to a granular level of, how does a husband and wife consume goods and services differently? Does the husband prefer Sprite and the wife prefer Pepsi? Or is the husband Maker's Mark whiskey and the wife red wine? I mean, we're able to identify what those needs are and preferences are within a community down to that level. So it's almost like peeling back the rooftops and be able to get a good view. We have this all in-house, we don't outsource any of this information. So Noel and some of the team would have access to all this information in a matter of minutes through our scout platform, which I'll touch on here in a minute. So you don't have to, you know, outsource it, wait a several weeks, and just get a report in, and then, okay, what do I do with it? Being an analytic firm, what we do is, we have all this information, we gather it, we have teams that go through it all to get answers out of it, of identifying what retailers are truly the best, and not only the best, but most likely to locate here. The way we also gather that information is things like what I did today. I mean, I got on a plane, I flew here, I rented a car, I went and had some wings at Hurricanes, went to Best Buy, grabbed a little something, and then came here. From when I leave here, I'll return that car and I'll make my next trip. But every single day, we leave a trail behind on how we live our lives and spend our money.
You'd invite you more often, you spending money like that.
It'd be my pleasure. This is my third trip. But, no, the other thing is, is really just getting out there and understanding how these people are living their lives. It's credit card swipes, magazine subscriptions, we all have reward cards that we use. I mean, it's just how we're gathering information, mobile data, there's all different kinds of avenues. We have over 250 sources that we leverage to be able to pull this information from to really understand factual-based information off your consumers in the market. Next I want to touch on is drive time trade area. So, we could look at city boundaries, but that's not what retailers are looking at. They know that we shop based off convenience. I know it takes me seven minutes to get to my grocery store, buy my milk and eggs, I know it takes me seven minutes to get back, but I couldn't tell you if it's three miles or five miles away. And that's why they don't look at radial rings or mileage whatsoever. They're looking at that drive time, because we are convenience-based shoppers. So now, when we're looking at different drive times, we're able to quantify how many of those core customers are within that drive time. So if it's a Subway, we could be looking at a quick eight to 10-minute drive time, quantify how many of those core customers are in there based off of what they want to see. Or if it's a Menards, or a Costco, or Home Depot, what is that drive time? It's going to be more 35, 40-minute drive time trade area. We're going to be pulling in much bigger numbers. So, that's why we're looking at that instead of radial rings, is we want to understand how many of those core customers for those specific concepts. Every concept out there has a different drive time trade area and type customer that they prefer. So now, what we do at Buxton is we, instead of just having this analysis on each and one of the, each and, each one of these, sorry, what we do is, we start combining all these components together to really start creating some story behind it. So, now that we have that drive time trade area, and then the consumer profiles of all this individuals within that drive time, what we're going to do is, we're going to combine those components together and create what we like to call is a unique retail thumbprint for Waterloo. So just like you'd have your unique thumbprint out here, every retailer out there has a unique customer profile that they're looking for. So we match it in our database of over 5,000 retailers to identify, okay, what retail concepts are truly the best fit for here, based off the consumer habits. But then, we take it to the next level. So it's almost like putting it in a funnel, right? So we put 5,000 in a funnel, say kicks out 300 that are truly the best fit for out here. We're going to keep that going by looking at what else factors that most people have no idea that retailers are looking for. Is it co-tenants, adjacency, square footage, traffic counts? Are they even looking to expand it to this region? What type of storefronts do they like? What square footage is with, on an end cap, or is it an interior that they would prefer? So, there's just unbelievable amounts of what else factors that they look at, that we're going to weed through to identify which ones are the best fit for your community, and which ones are truly most likely to locate here. The last thing you want is somebody like Noel spending hours and hours, and even years sometimes, going after a retailer that the community has given feedback, oh, we want to see, I don't know, Trader Joe's here, we want to see Trader Joe's. Well, he could reach out to Trader Joe's for two years and never really get a response or get anywhere, because they're not even looking to expand into this particular region, right? Or, we could narrow that list down to the people that he's going to get in touch with, that we've identified, because we've done our homework, who is truly the best match, and have those conversations and speed that timeframe up. This way, he's leveraging his time, efforts, and resources properly, instead of wasting time. As we know, it's important, right? So, once we have identified those retail matches, what we're going to do is create a retail plan, marketing plan, that is basically exactly a lot of the information that we provide through our models on our retail side. So what we're doing here, as you look at this sheet, we're going to look at that drive time trade area that's specific to that retail concept. We're going to look at the economic, or, sorry, not the economic development, but the demographic information on there, to see what that workforce looks like. It's a small piece of the puzzle, but it's an important piece. But the most important, as you look towards the bottom, you'll see the address, and it'll say XYZ. What that's looking at is your proposed site that you have today, or whenever we have it prepared, which one we're actually going to be marketing towards. We're going to score that, just like our retail partners ask us to score sites for them in their models. And then we're going to compare it to five to 10 other locations that that retailer has on the ground right now, today, that are performing well. We're not doing a simple peer analysis where we look at a community that's similar in size, see what retailers they have there and that you don't. What we're doing is, we're taking it to the next level, identifying where are they looking at based off of customer, demographic, accessibility, area draw, and competition. So there's many other factors that we're looking at that, and so we're going to compare it to five to 10 other locations and show them that they're performing well. Retailers are not pioneers, they want to know, where have I gone, done this before, and been successful? You've got to remember, they're making significant investments in here, so, you know, just like here in government, very risk averse, right? So, that's what we're looking at from their standpoint as well. So, that's what we want to do, is just show them and help them move forward with confidence. The next thing that I want to touch on, is once we build these recruitment packages, this market validation information, they'll all be customized for each of those specific retailers that we've identified. That's going to be through continued conversation, understanding the vision, what type of retailers we want to see in the market. It's not, here's 20 retailers, this is what we need to focus on. We're going to look at the leakage surplus analysis, see where there's some gaps in the market. Do we want to focus on more sit-down dining? Do we want to focus on maybe some, you know, specialty grocers, which are growing significantly right now? More of the casual restaurants that are having healthier ingredients and stuff like that are really growing significantly, because they're in demand. So what are we going to look at from concept-wise? And that's what we're going to build. So once we have that match 20, that we agree, yes, this is our number one fit, or our best fit for us to proactively go after, we're going to build those recruitment packages, we'll get in contact with those retailers, they're key decision-makers, let them know that you've engaged with Buxton. We identified them as a good match, we've done our homework, showing them that you're open for business, you're serious about retail. And then we pass that information on to you guys as well. So, we take the guesswork out of that. We verify all these contacts prior to ever passing this information along with you. A lot of times, the people in these businesses, they go to different type concepts here and there, we always make sure and verify that the best contact is still available, or, you know, for your region and else, and all the other different factors there. So, we pass that on to you guys, let them know we're engaged, we're open for business, we're going to be pursuing them, we identified them as a good match. But then on top of that, we just hit the beginning. We have an ongoing partnership to where we have an account management team, there's over 30 account managers. Most of them have started on the retail side, worked directly with retailers, so they know how to speak to them, they know what they're looking for. But they're going to be an extension of your staff. So when you're engaged in a conference call, or a meeting, we're going to be engaged in that as well. So, nobody can talk on Waterloo better than you guys, and then we're there to be the experts from the retail standpoint, and put in your best foot forward. So, they'll be alongside, whether it's questions about our scout platform, which I'll touch on, whether it's a conference call with a retailer, maybe meeting with a retailer in person, they'll fly out here, they'll sit down and have these meetings with you. And then ICSE, we have a conference that we go to every single year. There's over 30,000 attendees. Virtually every retailer you could possibly think of will be there. We have a significant investment at that show. We bring about 40 or 50 of us to represent our clients. We have a large booth that almost looks like an Apple store, I have some pictures, maybe I'll share here in a second, but we're there to support you. So if you go to ICSE, you don't need a booth or anything like that. If you have scheduled meetings, we want to be a part of that, but you're going to have it right there in our booth. We'll have all the tools that you need, all the validation information ready, and a scheduled place for you for more of those meaningful conversations and deal-making conversations that we have at ICSE. We have a private conference room in the middle of our booth as well. So, that's accessible for you guys, and we encourage it. We help preset meetings prior to that event, to make sure that you're getting engaged with as many retailers as possible. So, the other thing is ongoing research. If you're engaged with, I guess Dick's Sporting Goods is already here, but, say you're getting engaged with Dick's Sporting Goods, they want to know how many golfers per capita use Titleist golf bags. We're able to provide that additional information that's needed. If we're focused on Logan Plaza, and we want to look at maybe some other concepts down here, we could do a market analysis overview for different drive time trade areas around Waterloo to help Noel leverage that on either getting more engaged with any organic retail, or even outreach to other retailers outside of that match list. So, it's not just the 20 retailers, we identify anything that we could leverage our analytics for in economic development or citywide, let us know we want to be a part of that process. So it's not just retail recruitment, I want to stress that enough. North Augusta, we helped recruit a large water park into their community. Atlanta, we helped them understand where to put a skate park. Caribou, Maine is about as north and remote as you can get without getting in Canada. We helped them recruit a large call center, all through our analytics. So there's a number of different tools that we'll leverage any way possible to support our partners. When I was talking about our scout platform, what this is, is a proprietary platform that is your gateway into Buxton and your implementation tool. So, as I was saying, all this information that we have, you have access to in a touch of a button. We provide an iPad Air, but you could also get this information from your laptop, your iPhone, so anywhere, if you're at a conference, or if you're meeting with a local retailer, you'd be able to pull all this information upon your hand within a minute or two. You could even geolocate yourself within that store and be able to pull that drive time trade area, but this is your implementation tool. So, when I go through this, what we're looking at is, you could pull that drive time trade area, you could pull a leakage surplus analysis, you could look at traffic counts, you could look at all that healthcare stuff that I was talking about earlier, all in a matter of minutes. If we're looking at what retail matches we identified, we'll have them all in one place, and then all the market validation information behind each and every one of those. So if you're engaged with Target here, you could show who are those competitors, where's that drive time trade area, all the information that they want and need to see at the touch of a button. And I won't spend a whole lot of time on that, I have it up. If you wanted to go through a live version, I'd be more than happy to do that. I just know we're pressed for a little bit of time, but I'd be more than happy to do that, I can't stress that enough. And then other analysis that you're able to pull, like I said, the leakage surplus analysis, the propensities, that very, very thorough demographic information, there's green awareness, I mean, it's unbelievable the amount of information that you can pull off the scout platform. This platform is the exact same platform that our retail partners work off of as well. So if you're working with one of our retail partners, you pull up Scout, immediately you're going to have a connection of some sort there. And then on top of that, on their scout platform, they have a tile on there that shows And then on top of that, on their Scout platform, they have a tile on there that shows our community partners that are seeking retail. So it puts you on the map to over our 2,000-plus retail users today. So it gives you that instant exposure. So at this point, I went through it fairly quickly because I just wanted to make sure that we had enough time for some questions, as I imagine there would be some.
Questions?
I've got a question on, kind of a new concept, I believe, is on the membership economy. I noticed that you had Netflix up there and I can't remember if you had Starbucks. But a lot of people are going to a membership type of a community, so how do you connect somebody that wants to just sit at home and watch?
Watch Netflix?
And that's somebody that wants to have that terms of that membership economy, Starbucks. You know, if people feel like they're part of a membership, when they go to Starbucks and open up their computer and have those conversations, so it's kind of a new, a new thing that's going on in the country.
There's a number of things that we could look at. We do have access to IP addresses, so we could see, you know, who's, and then data from cell phones or computers, so we could see where people are going to get into the Wi-Fi system. You know, I stopped at Hy-Vee for a little bit, logged in to do a little bit of work before I came over here. So, I mean, there's ways of capturing that and that is some of the resources that we have. So, you know, from it being a specific membership, what we'd have to look at is what were they dialing into, you know, and so on. And one thing I just kind of want to clarify too is, we do have down to that doorstep level information, but we always keep it within four households. So we don't just look at one particular person, we do keep it within four households, the way we categorize everything as well. I don't want it, it's almost scary sounding sometimes, so I just want to make that clear too, that that's how that goes.
I had a question. You made the comment as far as the unemployment rate for the city was 4.1%. When you present that information, do you look at like certain segments of the city or, because the unemployment rate is higher in like the African-American population. So when you present that to a business, do you just tell them that it is a 4.1% overall without getting into specifics for certain areas or how do you do that?
There's a number of things I would do, and I was referencing just from statewide that it was 4.1. But what we could do is, just like we're looking at the drive-time trade areas on the map, we could put in any address in the country and be able to do a drive-time, whether it's five minutes, we could do custom territories about an area that you're talking about, and then we'd be able to pull that information off of that alone. So we're able to strategically place, you know, just custom territories or a drive-time to identify specific sub-markets around the area. So it's not just the one that we're focused on for retail, we could do it for anywhere in the city, anywhere in the state even, if needed. And you guys would have access to that information unlimited. And that's the other thing is, you're not looking at purchasing a study here. I know a lot of communities out there look at doing a market study and stuff like that, you're actually in a proactive plan that is constantly evolving. So our information that we have in-house updates every eight weeks, and you guys have unlimited access to all this information, unlimited access to our support staff or our account management team. So that is something I want to make clear as well, is it's a true fluid partnership and we really truly are an extension of your team. So it'd be like having a group of retail experts on your staff.
I don't know if this is a question for you or for Noel, but historically, wouldn't this, this whole concept be something that the business would take upon themselves to determine whether or not they want to come to this market rather than the city spending money to attract retail?
And Dennis can probably jump in too. I mean, I think they could. We're thinking proactively by doing this, we're getting ourselves in front of a lot more of them that are already doing things like this by having the data ready for them. But you're right, I mean, and Dennis noted, they have over 3,000 clients that they deal with that are doing things like this for their site searches as well. But we're thinking this is more of a proactive step for us to be able to go after more companies and for us to hit the radars of more companies earlier on.
Right. As I was mentioning earlier, it's very competitive. So if they are looking at your market, they're looking at many other markets as well. A lot of the times, what they'll do is they'll just look at maybe income levels or rooftops or, you know, different things like that, and they'll just rule you out. And it's kind of more of a gatekeeper response, if Noel's just reaching out and saying, hey, we want Trader Joe's here, here's our demographic information, here's, you know, what makes Waterloo so special, so some other additional information as well. They may see something in that demographic information and say, okay, that's not a good fit for us. But what we do is, go ahead and we match that, so we take that guesswork out of the equation, but on top of that, we get past those gatekeeper responses. So, when a retailer says no, we don't really take no for an answer. What we do is we dig deeper and look at, okay, why did they tell us no? Then we run our own analysis, make sure that those numbers are accurate, and then if they aren't accurate, we'll show them the accurate ones, but if they are somewhat accurate, what we'll do is we'll look at other markets that they went through, that they have a lower threshold that looked just like your market, right? Am I confusing you there? So, what we're doing is ultimately, okay, they say, you didn't meet this threshold. Well, we'll look at other locations that they have on the ground right now where they didn't meet that threshold that looks just like your market that they're successful in. So we always have ways to combat that no gatekeeper response. And being proactive, it does put you on the map. So, instead of just a wait-and-see approach, they could end up at any neighboring community and they might not even have looked at Waterloo. So what we want to do is get them interested in the community and really get the, pull them into the market by showing them why they can't afford, you know, not to locate here.
Noel, let me ask you a question though.
Yes, sir.
With this opportunity, say for instance, we know that there are several corridors throughout the community that we would like greater interest in, are we able to utilize some cost sharing possibly with, let's say for instance, downtown, we have downtown storefronts, but from a city side, can we sort of partner with particular areas for some of the cost sharing with this, if that is an opportunity?
For the contract, I mean, what we were talking about before is with the Scout program or something, having the ability for some of the developers, if they wanted to get to that information, that they could pay a certain amount of money to the city to have that access to the information as well.
The one thing that, from a developer standpoint, that I would touch on is, you don't want five developers calling Starbucks saying, come to Waterloo, and they're like, well, I thought I talked to somebody from Waterloo and I talked to this person at Waterloo. But, from helping them get an understanding of, is it worth me developing in the community? Am I going to have the growth in the retail available in the space that I develop? I think you'd have a huge part of that, be able to tell that story. But even from a Chamber of Commerce or a business retention aspect, I imagine that they would have significant interest on strengthening and growing their businesses, that may be a good approach. We've had some communities with EDC and a Chamber joint. And then what we could do on top of that is those other markets, we could do a market analysis overview to where they have some of the basic information, but more of the matched retailers are going to be on a specific site like Logan Plaza as that comes upcoming coming up, or if it's downtown or, you know, we'll obviously talk through that and see exactly what would have the best impact on the community the quickest and see what the main focus is and we'd gear towards that, but then we'd be able to leverage everything throughout the community.
I was just wondering, your clients probably are cities for the most part, is that right?
Most of it's retail. So our backbone truly is in the retail industry, but we have about 800, we've worked with about 800 communities now.
Okay, and those communities have paid you a certain amount of money for your service. And what is used as a measure of success? I mean, the ratio of how much they pay to how many businesses you bring, or is there a dollar amount associated with how much the city would be paying you and how much dollar investment we get back? How is that measured?
It's a great question, and everybody's, I guess, level of success would be significantly different. Everybody has different objectives that they're trying to reach, so it's very hard to measure that. To kind of give you an ROI standpoint, Rochester, New Hampshire has, for every dollar that they spend on Buxton, they've gotten a $91 return, but they did an independent study on that to understand that. And that's not, they don't have any sales tax revenue coming into the city. So, they've had good numbers coming in, and the other thing that I'll share is, we have three-year partnerships and they actually have a 90% renewal rate, so, for an additional three years. So, I'm very confident that majority of our clients are measuring their level of success by renewing. Sometimes what it is, if they don't renew, is maybe budget's changed or they've achieved their goals that they're going to achieve for now, so there's a number of different things. But, it's a great question, it's very difficult for us to answer, just because everybody's idea of success is going to be very different.
One final thing, and that is, all this information that you collect, have there been issues of privacy that have been thrown at you at all?
No, sir.
Toward the company at all?
Not at all. We don't attach names, like when I did Ben Shaw and Tom King, those are made-up names, but we don't attach names to anything, and that's what I was saying, we keep it within four household levels, like we don't, we're just not going to go there. No, sir. We are very, our reputation is flawless and we've been doing this for, like I said, over 20 years and we just want to keep it that way. That's something that we would never toy around with.
If we, as a city, want to take an extra step to becoming a more business-friendly environment, how would this tool be seen to developers within the area as being another option to help increase, increase that potential?
To increase more like corporations and industrial and stuff like that?
As many tools as we can get. I mean, you mentioned earlier, it's highly competitive.
Right.
And, you know, I think we need to take that posture of doing what we can to increase the amount of business, create the diversity of opportunities here. And we're, you know, still somewhat manufacturing, that's our backbone, but to take this next step, and having this as a tool, as a resource for businesses locally, how would that be seen by businesses? Is that a positive? Is that, is that competition or is this a resource that can help, help what we have locally?
That's a, that's a great question too. There's multiple levels that I bet I'll answer. So, looking at, from the smaller businesses, as we bring more retail in, it's going to bring in more traffic, right? So what we like to say is a rising tide lifts all boats. So, they're getting more traffic that they wouldn't necessarily see before, from a entrepreneurial standpoint. So maybe somebody's shops in a downtown area, if somebody wants to open a coffee shop, we'll say Joe wants to open Joe's Coffee Shop. What we could do is we could identify, would Joe's Coffee Shop be sustainable in that market? If so, we could put all the validation together in a business plan for him to take to a bank, get a loan, move forward with confidence, but not stop there, but be able to show him, okay, do people here prefer iced coffee? Is it a French vanilla latte? Is it a cappuccino? What products are they going to be preferring and to make sure they'll be carrying for him to be successful? So, not only could we make it work as the demand there, but here are the products that you need to carry to be the most successful. We could do that for, you know, Bar and Grill to a quilting store, I mean, there's, I mean, thousands and thousands of items that we'd be able to show the preferences on to help them strengthen and grow. So, and the other flip side on that is, if you have Joe wanting to open that coffee shop and it's not a good fit, we could save that heartache of probably spending life savings and then a vacancy again in eight to 12 months down the road. And then from a larger manufacturing standpoint, we could show workforce and then also like trade levels, what those expertise are in. But then on top of that, as your retail grows, you get more and more attractive for more businesses to locate in Waterloo because that convenience is there, that lifestyle's better. So it's going to be that work, live, play type atmosphere, the families will have somewhere to go shopping, and the kids, you know, as if they have kids that are growing older that need jobs, they need those entry-level positions, which retail creates entry-level positions as well. So it helps, number one, continue to bring your community's unemployment rate down, but then it also creates more opportunity for those other businesses as well as those individuals need a place to grab their milk and eggs on the way home and stuff like that. So it's creating that convenience for more corporations or industries to locate in Waterloo.
All right, I think we're over about five minutes, aren't we?
Okay.
Noel, contact information for council if they have any more questions, you'll supply that, all right? Well, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Mayor, thank you.
Can we get a copy of this presentation?
What's that?
Can we get a copy of this presentation?
I will email Noel an overview and this way, it pretty much will spell it all out for you, and you can look through it that way, but I'll email that to Noel and let him pass it on.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for all your time, I truly do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, traffic, camera safety initiative, funding options.
Dan Trump, the Director of Safety, I've actually, I have some handouts from Sandy. We envisioned, based on the task force meetings and the conversations and feedback we received from all of you, to basically start with a base system where there are cameras at every signal intersection, basically intersections that have traffic lights and railroad crossings, and that's what these costs are based upon. There are many variables involved, as you're going to see, and Sandy put these together within the past two weeks. And it's not my place to explain them, she will, and Michelle is here, because the purpose of the work session is, if this is what you want, how's it going to be paid for?
Thank you.
We have been going over this, but what we would like you to understand is that we're just beginning this process, not knowing exactly what is wanted or needed. We really need to step up a study for this project. If this is what you want to do within the city, it's going to take a while for us to study it and come up with exactly what we need. We'll have to work with vendors, we'll of course have to go out and have meetings with the community and the council and city staff. I'm trying to line up another visit with Dubuque with my technicians and traffic engineer and also Chris from IT. We would like to go to Dubuque and actually go through their system and see what they have. Also, I guess if you read through this, if you have any questions, this is a preliminary, this is estimated costs. We, as for railroads, we really, I don't have a list of exactly all the gates and lights and stuff yet, I'm waiting for that from Des Moines. And then we would have to start at stage one with that because we don't, I mean, actually the city owns the poles and the crossings. They're maintained by the railroad, but we were told through the railroad that we own them, so at least we could mount cameras or something on them. And the ones that have the gates, at least there's service there. Other than that, we're just in the beginning process, so we're kind of grasping at costs and what is wanted and needed.
So Sandy, it says $434,000 to ready 140 intersections.
Right.
Up top, it says 197 intersections or locations, so.
Okay, they have some type of traffic control. Some of those are flashers, some are school signals that stand alone. Those would be more difficult because fiber doesn't go to them, they're just a standalone crossing. Could we do it? Yes, it would be a lot more expensive to get fiber over to them.
So, those 197, they won't have anything? I'm confused.
No, no, just 140, we could get fiber to.
140 out of 100. 140 out of the 197?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And also, out of that, 18 locations, not just intersections, but locations are wireless, which means, I can give you some examples here. The new Kimball Avenue corridor is all wireless. The new 63 corridor that's just been completed up through Newell Street from down out to Newell. The Casino Shalas, the Casino Isle of Capri Boulevard, those are all wireless that come into our traffic control center. At the time, now, they would not need to be hooked up to fiber. In the long run, it would be better if they were to get a really good video recording.
So Sandy, if we can back up a minute, what, I mean, what is our initial purpose or goal here? Is it capturing information in the event of an accident?
Yes. In fact, right now, we just, the wireless cameras, we just downloaded an accident on Kimball at Park Lane where an individual got hit by a bike, or hit on a bike. And we captured that, downloaded it, recorded it, gave it to the police department. So, yes, basically, and also, if, say, a crime occurs and the car goes through the intersection, we'll be able to trace that. So if it's in that location and it was questionable, then yes, we'll have it.
Okay. So this doesn't have anything to do with speeding? I mean, at one time, I thought we talked about speeding and that would allow us to maybe better utilize our police officers to do other things rather than dealing with speeding issues?
At this time, no, it doesn't. Not to say that it can't.
Right.
But at this time, no.
But that's not part of this?
No.
And then we also talked, again, to some degree or another, about cameras being used for public safety issues rather than traffic issues in some of our more challenged neighborhoods. So this doesn't have anything to do with that either?
This would only record, as time goes on, what happens in that vicinity or that neighborhood.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sandy, some of the conversation also revolved around criminal activity and use of this for, use of cameras for that as well, right?
We, if it's in our jurisdiction or our camera system, yes, we could.
Okay. Are they 360 degrees? Do they?
The pan tilt zoom are, we can move them 360, but they are stationary. Where we sit them, that's where they record. They don't continually move, no.
Oh, okay. Sandy, let me ask a question. So the cameras in Dubuque, those are traffic camera, safe, traffic safety cameras, more so than we're going to put these up in a neighborhood or so. The primary reasoning is that, but they have connectivity that if we need to analyze an accident, if the police need access to something that happened, we'd have the connectivity or Dubuque has the connectivity to share that information in real time, I think 30 days and sort. So is that, just so I can, I can understand as well?
Yes, my understanding is yes. I haven't been to Dubuque to actually see what they have yet, but from what I was told in our meetings with Chief Chalk and stuff, yes.
So Dan, can you talk about that a little bit? Because I thought, kind of where part of this conversation started was, I think Dubuque was years ahead of us as far as traffic cameras. But then I thought where this got the big impetus was they had used this camera connection for some of their more challenging public safety or criminal activities in some of their parks. And as a matter of fact, I think one of the recent shootings or murders over there, they were able to capture somebody based on this camera access. Isn't that kind of where this all started?
Yes, yes, as a matter of fact. And we've made many cases, including the only homicide we've had this year was made with cameras from, through private businesses, convenience stores and such. This would be a substantial improvement to what we currently rely upon. And we've made several cases, in particular homicide cases, based on cameras at private businesses. This would greatly enhance that.
In some of those neighborhoods where there are challenges, but there's no businesses, correct?
No businesses, but our criminal element that tends to engage in violent behavior moves about in a motor vehicle. So odds are they would drive through one of these intersections.
Got you. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Not normally, but you're on the task force.
Hey, thanks. So Steve Murphy, 124 Terrace Drive. So a couple things, it's a little hard to follow the numbers, but I think I've got it somewhat. Surely, we're going to make decisions, better business decisions than, say, every signalized intersection gets a camera. I'd rather see, I mean, there are certain signals that may hardly ever catch anything useful to the police department or anything on there. I do think we should look at where Dubuque is and quit following and kind of try to arrive where Dubuque is in kind of a similar timeframe. I'd like to see some of the money, look at each intersection and say, might not need a camera there. Corner Ainsborough and Sam Arnan, not super high crime area, not a lot of traveling from criminals from one to another. And maybe take that money and say, there are some intersections that don't have a signalized intersection, signalized traffic control device, and maybe we want to start to put our foot in that pool and say, this is an area where citizens need protection from traffic accidents, from speeding, whatever situation it is. And not start with such a small view and start with a smarter view. My thoughts, thanks.
Any other questions?
Motion for adjournment.
Second. Motion to make with proper second, all in favor.
Aye.
Oppose.
Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Lind. Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Motion to approve the agendas for both.
Second. We have a motion, a second on the agenda. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, that motion passes. We have two items on the agenda today. Can you take one or both of them, if you like?
Chairman, I'll take the first one. That's a motion to approve a request from the building official to initiate the civil service process to fill a position of permit writer and make an appointment.
Second. We have a motion, a second on this request. Is any questions on this?
This is a open position that we're just refilling.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. Anyone else? Nothing, all right. We have a motion, a second on this, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, that motion passes. Second request.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request from Traffic Operations Superintendent to begin the civil service process and make an appointment for one electrician position in the Traffic Operations Department.
Second. We have a motion, a second on this request for a electrician. Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, that motion passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, a second on adjournment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
I'll move the agenda and approval of the minutes, September 6, 2016, as proposed.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on the agenda and minutes. Questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, that motion passes. Travel requests.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take those.
Okay.
Officer Roulebois, Gersh, and McAllen to attend class on firearms instructor recertification in Johnson, Iowa, October 14th, amount not to exceed $495. Lieutenant McCollum to attend a meat class on rifle instructor recertification, Johnson, Iowa, dates October 13th, amount not to exceed $190.
We have a motion, a second on the travel requests. Any questions or discussion there?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, that motion passes. Pre-offs.
Mr. Chairman, we have some pre-offs tonight. Building inspection, amount estimated $2,000. Fire alarms suppression system plan review, 45 West Jefferson Street, which is the Grand Crossing Apartments. Building inspection, $1,000. Fire alarms suppression system plan review, 500 East Fourth Street, which is the KWWL building. Central garage, $2,799.17 plus $125 shipping and handling. Electronic control module, fire 304. Finance, $12,000. Preparation of the 509A report and biannual OPEB valuation. Leisure Services, $11,550. Advertising and advertising spot production to promote the Cedar Valley Sports Plex during Monday Night Football, MLB Playoffs, College Football, and other programming. Legal Department, $4,680.50. McQuillan Municipal Law Report Newsletter, $1,188. McQuillan 2016 Pocket Parts, $3,269.50. And McQuillan 2016 Index Pamphlet, $223. MIS, not to exceed $3,000. Fiber optic enclosures and racks. Planning Department, $24,000. Concrete wall footing removal at former Chamberlain site, removal of concrete wall and footing per ton. Planning as well, $3,000. Monitoring for demo of the former Chamberlain site. Police Department, $3,500. Purchase and install an incinerator with an afterburner to destroy evidence, drugs and prescription drugs turned in by the community. And sanitation, $10,500 for roadstone for Compo site drive.
Second. Give me a motion, a second on the pre-offs. Is any questions or discussion there?
I do have one question on, for leisure services on the TV commercials and media com. Do we create that, create that commercial in-house? And secondly, I'm assuming it's a 30-second spot?
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director, I believe you're correct on the length of the spot. They do assist with the production of the commercial, however. So KW, KWWL will be assisting with that.
And then, along those lines, are these more about identifying that we're, we have these programs available, or is it, we actually giving a quick message?
We're actually, it's a, it's a marketing piece that's just getting the sportsplex out there, and it'll have a quick message about what we have to offer. It's aimed at membership retention and increase.
I'd just like for you to suggest, or for you to look at, 15-second spots where you get a 15-second, a 30-second commercial, one a 15-second.
Sure.
It seems like you, well, you get twice the amount of exposure by doing that. And as long as you're not developing a real 30-second spot, if you're just trying to identify the sportsplex that we offer these kinds of programs, that I think 15-second spot would be something to look at.
I'll take that back to our manager and take that into consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Anything else?
Michelle, I have a question here on, with this building inspection of this fire alarm suppression system. I would think our building department and fire marshal would do that. I saw your name on the, the sign off on it, that's why I'm asking you.
Yeah, Michelle Weeden, our Chief Financial Officer. They started doing this a few years ago, and it used to be for larger buildings, they, we have been subcontracting fire inspections to a company, I think it's called Lund.
Yes.
Yeah. And I think in, that's one topic in the fire code changes for tonight, I believe the fire department wants to start doing that for much smaller buildings than what we do it for today. So you'll, and I have a question about how much that additional cost will be per year.
Okay.
Because we haven't heard that yet.
Yeah, I just assumed the fire marshal did this, but apparently not.
Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
So for the sanitation, $10,500. Assume that's the roadstone for the new leaf dump, brush dump. So that's part of the 1.8 million, I guess, and it seems like there are probably more to come to get the road ready. Would that all there would be to get the road ready for travel, or do we need to put more into it besides this?
Mark Rice, Public Works Director, this is the road system, just so we can get citizens into the site to deposit their leaves. While it's a permanent site, this is a temporary repair or a temporary fix to get people in and out safely. And next week, I'll probably come with an additional request for more rock. But again, the 1.8 million was an estimate. I still believe we can do it for less than that.
So out of curiosity, how much, out of $10,500, how many dump trucks, how much rock are we talking? Just so you can kind of visualize it.
Let me see, I don't have my calculator with me, but it's $9.87 or $9.78 per ton, so a little over 100, 100 tons.
Thank you. Mr. Currie?
It doesn't go as far as you would think.
Anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, that motion passes. We have four items, budget line item amendments, we're on file, the city clerk's office, and also the bill's payment this week is $2,298,961.70. That's 2,298,961.70. Motion, a second on bill's payment. Any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, that motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for adjournment.
I'll second that. We have a motion, a second on adjournment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
is sometimes more well-known outside of our area. And indeed, in the Hellman and Associates' 50 years of their expertise and wisdom and insight, not only spread around our community, but around the state and the nation. And doing great things and always with that Waterloo tag on it. And so, of course Waterloo's had a great, great history in baseball. And Bob has done, in partnership with Paul and Leisure Services, the City of Waterloo, with the gaming and with many other donors, has gone a long way in ensuring that our youth are gonna keep the baseball bug for a long, long time.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next presentation is for Ms. Cheryl Huddleston. If you would please join me up front. A very special honor. How are you, sir? And Cheryl also worked to host the IAELPRA last week. I think that's, yeah. That's almost a whole word. But brought folks here to the Sportsplex for conferences past last week that I had an opportunity to sit and talk to some people that were there as well. But this presentation is for Cheryl Huddleston. An appreciation of 30 years of valuable and dedicated service to the City of Waterloo, August 11th, 2016. And I think we know that sometimes working for the city could be a thankless job. People do what they do here, they work hard, and this is a great way to honor. We can't reward you for all that you've done, but we appreciate what you do for the City of Waterloo every day. So, have any comments for us?
Actually, I think I've enjoyed almost all the time that I've been here. I would say 100%. I've had six mayors, four HR directors, and who knows how many more.
Right. All right. All right, thank you much. Let's give her a round of applause. Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. It's 1A through B5, and within that are the bill's payment this week, which is $2,298,961.70.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. Any questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
All right, that item carries. Public hearings, number two, someone.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number two is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the fiscal year 2017 Sergeant Road Trail Bridge Number One Replacement Contract Number 917.
Second.
Motion is made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against this particular item or have questions? Or any comments on file for this?
No comments on file.
Going a second time?
Yes, I'd like to speak.
Yes, sir. Please come to the mic, state your name.
Jamie Hansen.
And address?
P.O. Box 82, Dewar, Iowa.
All right, yes, sir.
We got this gentleman here. If I help... Huh? Not time for it. Oh, I'm sorry.
You're gonna come back later for a particular item? Which item were you looking for?
I've never been here before. All I know is, I walked this man down the street, I got a maximum of sidewalks because he can't go forward. And it's not right.
Well, let's talk about it during oral presentations then. So, be welcome, you're here, and we look forward to hearing your comments. Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion and to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yep.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Any questions, council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, that item carries.
Mr. Mayor, I make a, or move to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
That item carries.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to receive and file, instruct the city clerk to read bids and refer bids to city engineer for review.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Clerk, please read the bids.
The estimate for this project was $114,941.13. The first bid came from Peterson Contractors Incorporated of Ryanbeck, Iowa. They had 5% security. Their bid amount was $80,213.75. Second bidder was Vith Construction Corporation of Cedar Falls, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $90,993.10. Next bidder was Benton Sand and Gravel of Cedar Falls, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $69,128.05. Next we had Boulder Contracting of Grundy Center, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $69,990.78. And the next one was Lodge Construction Incorporated of Clarksville, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $66,155.27.
All right, thank you. All right, could someone take three and four, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving reconstruction overlay street improvement list for 2017, and number four, resolution approving construction plans for paving sanitary sewer and storm sewer serving Greenbelt Platte Number Seven Titan Trail as submitted by VJ Engineering of Cedar Falls, Iowa.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Counsel or community, any questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
All right, can someone take five and six, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Amis?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the grant from the Iowa Department of Transportation's Office of Aviation for the, for contract number 18516 and project number 9I170A0200 at, for the fiscal year 2017 Commercial Service Vertical Infrastructure CSBI program for the physical improvements to the general aviation terminal building and hangar number five at Waterloo Regional Airport, and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the document, the grant documents. Number six is a resolution approving a contract with HR Green for onsite visits by staff to observe the progress of the various stages of demolition of the remaining railroad spur at the former Chamberlain Manufacturing Site in the amount of $3,000, and rescinding resolution number 2016-666 that authorized onsite visits in the amount of $1,500, and authorize the mayor to execute the same.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Counsel, any questions on these items?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Do I assume item number six, they just discovered there's more work there than what we thought, or what's the reason for that increase?
No.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. That's correct. We wanted some more items added into the final report, and we've also changed that from a time and hour basis to a lump sum payment. We think it works better with the grant requirements for what we're working on, but there are more items being prepared in the final report that we'd like to see.
And so, HR Green has to be there because of the potential contamination at site to remove a railroad spur, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
All right, those items carry. Someone take number seven, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Item number seven is a motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the first time in ordinance amending the 2008 traffic code by amending subsection 47 Glenwood Street to section 553. No parking here at corner by adding Northside in the 800 block in a westerly direction from Mohawk Street and Northside of the 900 block in an easterly direction from Mohawk Street.
Second.
Yes, a motion has been made with the second. Any questions about this item? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Pow, or, excuse me, Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, that item carries.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
All right, that item carries.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to consider and pass for the second, third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
That item carries. Number eight?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the first time in ordinance amending the 2007 Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo, Iowa by repealing Title IX, Chapter Two, Section Two Codes adopted subsection A and enacting in lieu thereof a new Title IX, Chapter Two, Section Two Codes adopted subsection A and repealing Title IX, Chapter Two, Section Eight Amendments and enacting in lieu thereof a new Title IX, Chapter Two, Section Eight Amendments on the Fire Code Ordinance Amendment.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. We've had a conversation about this. Are there any questions in the audience or?
I do, Mayor.
Mr. Welper.
Through finance this afternoon, I had a question regards to the fire alarm suppression system plan review. I just assumed that the fire marshal or building officials would be conducting that. I understand we used to, and we now are being charged for this. Do we pass this on to the contractor, or how's this work?
Pat Triller, Chief Fire Services, we require third-party review for a number of large projects within the city, and this would be one of them. Or there was maybe more on, more than one on finance, I'm not sure. But so, it's paid out of the building fees that are collected for review fees. So, they're complex systems. We have a fire protection engineer review them for us and then gives a report back to us, and then we act on, we act on the report. We've been doing it for probably three years, maybe a little longer. Michelle might be able to remember when we signed the agreement. So, it's for larger, larger projects, and then we also have it in the amendment to the ordinance change that's before you tonight as well to outline when we actually require third-party review. Hope I answered your question.
Thank you.
Yes, good sir.
John Sherbin, 1715 Robin Road. I don't know if I'm the only one that's confused. I have no clue what you said. Is this, what does this affect other than it's the fire department? Because subsections and whatnot, does this represent inspections, or what does it, what does it, what does it mean? Thank you.
Are we referring to the fire code itself or Mr. Welper's question?
When you read that... When you guys read that off, I had no clue. I don't know of anybody else out here that does, you know? We don't know. It's just a bunch of subsections and miscellaneous other stuff. It doesn't have, it doesn't tell us that you're putting a fire out or starting one or what's going on. I was just curious, what, what was, what, what's, what do we spend our money on?
Sure, just in broad terms, we're looking to adopt the International Fire Code, the 2015 edition. We currently have 2009 edition adopted. So, how that translates to the city is we're saying that that's our fire code, and that's what's before you tonight. Well, the, the fire code is probably 800 to 1,000 pages thick. It outlines everything from definitions of what a high-rise building is, what sprinkler system should go in, what alarm system should go in. I mean, it's a very, very large code.
Did we have any type of work session on this?
We had a work session on it last Tuesday, September 6th, I believe. I mean, if there's specific questions, I'll answer, but it's a very large code. Same with international building code, it's probably 1,000 pages thick. It sets guidelines for builders and our building community to know how we expect our buildings to be built and safety systems installed in them.
Yes, sir.
David Drucker, 30, oh, excuse me, Jim Chapman, 3145 West Fourth Street. Excuse me, I forgot. My question, I guess, and a lot of us in the chief seats here are wondering, yeah, we adopt all these chapters and these amendments and everything else, but what's it boiled down to for people that are gonna build something dollars and cents-wise, or us who want to remodel or something like that? That's what we're, we're trying to get at, Pat, is not all these codes and everything else and what they mean. It boils down to everybody dollars and cents, and that applies to number nine also. We need to know what it's gonna cost us in the chief seats to build something, to remodel something, you know, that kind of thing. These codes and all these changes don't mean anything other than paper until you try to do something. What's it gonna cost the average citizen or contractor to comply with these regulations from now on?
Well, I mean, we, we won't know because we don't know exactly what you're going to build. We had a work session on this last week to talk about this particular, particular item. The entire week went by. There's so broad, the code has so many things involved in it, and this is just taking our code. We've been working with our surrounding communities as well to try to find some consistency in what both communities offer, and we've done that. We've done that due diligence. We had the work session, and so now we're moving to adopt the 2015, 2015 code. I mean, if you want to sit down with Pat and talk about some specific questions you may have, but council has already had a work session about this item and more than willing to, to sit and talk about it or?
I, I guess I don't personally have any questions, but somebody out there in TV land probably has a question about what he's going to have to do now to build Brent Doster. What, what changes are gonna be for him, for all these different things he's doing? You know, it just, it's gonna affect somebody's pocketbook, and I'm not doing any remodel or anything like that, so I don't worry about it. But somebody down the road's gonna have these questions, and all of a sudden, they estimated this much to build this building, and it goes up 10%, goes up 20%? Somewhere along the line, you guys need to have an idea, so these people don't just see codes, they see dollars and cents, because that's what makes a difference on their pocket.
Mr. Mayor?
I mean, I don't, I don't know how you can answer that, but if you, you wanna try, but?
I don't know they can right now, but all I'm saying is the people in TV land don't know, because all we do is see codes passed and all that kind of thing.
Sure, I just, I just wanted to make a comment that uniformity is consistency is what we're after here. So, the City of Cedar Falls has adopted the IFC, the International Fire Code 2015. All large cities in the state of Iowa have adopted it. The State Fire Marshal's Office has adopted the International Fire Code 2015, and so is the Central Iowa Code Consortium down in the Polk County area. 17 communities came together to adopt the same code. I obviously can't answer what exactly it's gonna cost each individual builder. Keep in mind, the, the fire code that I administer is not residential, so it's only commercial. And in general terms...
Dolphins commercial.
Yes, sir. In general, in general terms, there's no big smoking gun in the new adoption for the 2015. And that's, that's generalized the statement. I did have some specifics for council at the work session on September 6th, and we, we feel confident that we're, we're in line with other communities, and we'll, we feel confident that we're working well with the business community by adopting this. And I will say that the majority of our contractors, designers and architects are waiting, when are you going to the 2015? Because there are some beneficial changes to architect, builder, that sort of thing. So, I guess that's about all I have to say on it, other than I can't specifically tell you how much it's gonna cost.
If any contractor, anyone out there that's looking have questions, are they free to contact the office, or do you have communication with those folks that this impacts the most?
Sure, we've had communication, and we have been asked when we are moving forward with the 2015, because the majority of our larger contractors are already dealing with the 2015 in other areas, including Cedar Falls. So, we think it's an appropriate move. We, we certainly welcome any questions, suggestions, stop by the fire station, contact the fire marshal or myself, we can answer any of them, but I think for the most part, this isn't gonna be a surprise to anybody.
Well, and I saw in the paper where they were talking about having the self-closing door on a residence between the garage and the, and the house that they had dropped before, and I'm not looking forward to taking groceries in and out of my house and getting kicked in a keister by the door. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Pat.
Sure.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to suspend the rules? Second.
Motion's made with the second. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Timeliness issue on this?
Uh, timeliness?
Pat Triller, Chief Fire Services, we'd like it approved tonight. There's not a huge panic to get it done. We'd prefer it to be passed tonight. We're hoping to get it adopted October 1st at the very latest, so I don't know if that works out to suspend the rules or not.
But how does that have an impact on new buildings, though? So, they need to go to a particular standard?
Correct. Like, we'd have to give notice to our, our building community that once, if you were to pass it tonight and suspend the rules, we'd need to give notice to say effective October 1st, we're going to the IBC, International Building Code, or IFC 2015. Obviously, the code was adopted over a year ago, and we're still not there yet. We'd, we'd like to get there, but...
Well, and you said a little bit earlier that as far as you know, any building going on right now, they've already adopted this, so, because they know it's coming.
Correct, yeah. All the architect firms, sprinkler companies, alarm companies, they have the 2015, which references different NFPA codes, to be clear there, but, yeah, and Cedar Falls is already there. Cedar Falls adopted, I believe, July 1st. So, we, we'd sure like it done tonight. If you suspend, if you don't suspend the rules, I suppose it'll be okay.
It just seems like this item and number nine, both, the prudent thing to do would be to make sure everybody's had as much notice, as much opportunity to talk about it as possible. I understand we had the work session, but, you know, about the time somebody that has some interest in this, in this, or some skin in the game would like to come and talk about it, and they're out of town on vacation or whatever, they miss that opportunity. I mean, I think there's a reason why we have these second, third readings on some things. So, I just wanted to make sure we weren't under any kind of gun with the higher-ups or anything like that.
Not, not from the fireside. I don't know if the building side has any comments on it, but...
I can check with them when we get to number nine. Thanks, Pat.
Okay, so with that said, Mr. Schmidt, I would hope whatever's going on with the fire code matches up with the building code as in timing. It's, it's crucial that we adopt at the same time. We share a couple of chapters within our code, which is in the IBC.
Got you. Thanks.
All right, Madam Clerk, roll call vote on the motion to suspend the rules.
Mr. Amis?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
All right, number nine.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the first time in ordinance amending the 2007 Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo, Iowa by repealing Chapter One Building Code and Article A Building Contractors of Chapter One Building Code of Title IX Building Regulations in their entirety, and enacting in lieu thereof new Chapter One Building Code and Article A Building Contractors of Chapter One Building Code of Title IX Building Regulations on the Building Code Ordinance Amendment.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Any questions about this item? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
All right, that item carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to suspend the rules? Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Any questions?
Do we need to ask the same question again, or do we already know the answer?
They could adopt a parallel, so I think we know the answer.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. Bruce wanted to make sure everyone saw my tie, I think, but I don't know if there's a huge hurry. We're at this, kind of the same answer that Pat gave. The building department has been working to let people know that this is coming. A lot, as Pat noted, a lot of other communities have adopted this, so it won't be a surprise to anyone that this is coming, but if you want to take all three readings, that's fine.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Powers?
No.
All right. Number 10, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Number ten, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Item number ten is a motion to accept and place on file the arbitrage test results reflecting no payment is due to the Internal Revenue Service for the general obligation bond series two thousand nine A issued in June two thousand nine, or for the general obligation bond series two thousand eleven A issued in June two thousand eleven.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Any questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote. Oh, could a, could a voice vote?
No.
Okay.
But yes, we can do a voice vote.
All right. That's a vote, voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. It is now time for oral presentations, that time we've waited for. We do have one person that emailed in a comment, and this was by Ms. Terri Stevens at one-six-two-nine Ackerman Street, and the topic is remaining debris at Logan Plaza. Comment, "The demolition project at the former Logan Plaza took, took place several weeks ago. The debris still remains. The accumulated rock fragments are not only an eyesore, but also a breeding ground for rodents and a hazardous environment for children. There seems to be an unwritten law that developers can begin demolition projects on Waterloo's east side and complete them whenever their schedules or their budgets allow. We have enough image problems on this side of town without any additional negatives. Code enforcement needs to act on this situation immediately." No, do you have any, any comment where we're at, or if we're moving forward, or if we're not?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. We're definitely moving forward. One of the things with the site is that they're gonna be using some of the debris for subbase for new construction. They've been finalizing up some of the new construction leases and projects, and so that's why it, it probably seems like it's taking a little bit longer, but they're gonna be using that as subbase, so it makes perfect sense to leave it there for cost purposes and for logistical purposes of having it there and ready for the new construction. But they are moving ahead. We actually have a meeting on it tomorrow, which is a progress meeting that we're very excited about.
All right. Thank you. We did have a gentleman that stood up a little bit earlier. If you would please rise, give us your name and address. Tell us what's on your heart and mind.
Yes, sir. Jamie Hanson, P.O. Box eighty-two, Dewar, Iowa. I've never done this before.
That's okay.
All I know is I've been on the streets, and I understand where this man's coming from. All right. I go walking backwards up corners and everything we come to, and you can't go forward, you know. I thought, you looked out for our own. I thought, take care of our own. And I should, I shouldn't even be here right now, and honestly, I don't care. But, you know, I mean, we got all these little things going on, and everybody's this and that, this and that, you know? We got a man that can't get up a street. That's what it's about, right here. It's about the people that... Come on, now. That's what it's about. So y'all take it for what you want to take it for. Don't really care, but take care of our own, take care of our little things that we gotta deal with for him to get down the street, get up the sidewalk, and do what he needs to do before we worry about everything else, all this building this and building that, you know? Maintenance, get a sidewalk. Come on, now. You know? Like I said, probably shouldn't even be here. I really don't care, but I spoke my piece, so, you know? The Lord wants us to look out for everybody. The Lord wants to help everybody, but help everybody in a fair way. You know? Come on.
Well, you should be here, and it's a, an example for us never to forget what matters most, and that's the people of this community. We can have sky rises, we can have big buildings, but we gotta make sure that every citizen can be successful here and get where they need to be.
I walked through sidewalks, I went pushing here, and three of them, I had to back them up, 'cause I couldn't get through them, this is real shit. I had to back them up. One of them right around the corner, our own corner.
All right.
You know?
Yes, sir.
Come on, now.
All right. Thank you.
Jim Chapman, two-two-four Birch.
Yes, sir.
I attended the forum Thursday night by Mr. McFadden. I thought it was a good presentation. One thing I didn't hear him say was about where does the teaching begin in your family? In my family, it began at home, because my dad always told me, he says, "Go out and have fun, son, but if you get in trouble, I'm gonna be here waiting for you." And I don't remember you going into a barber shop and had that old razor sharpener? That's what my dad had. You got in trouble, that's what you got. You know, these kids today, I, I don't know, just doesn't seem like there's any respect whatsoever. And when I ask him the question, after thirty years of being on the police force, dealing with the John Q. Public, you know, what's your feeling? And I don't think I got the correct answer. I think he either misunderstood what I was saying, or whatever, but I, I, we print out the daily reports every day on the police calls in Waterloo, and Dan knows we do, because I bring a lot of them down to him, and it's always the same address, the same people, you know? They just don't learn. It's over and over and over. But, you know, you talk about trouble between the, the police and the people out there, you know? They wouldn't get in trouble, they wouldn't see a policeman. That's my feeling. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else who would like to make comments right now? This is your time, three minutes.
In my neighborhood, there've been some changes going on. There've been some potholes that in the years past have been filled on rainy days with cold patch. In the last few weeks, I've noticed that they come around with a hot patch and a, like a steamroller or roller to roll that in and pack it in, so that it's got a good chance of staying. Also, the recycling at Ainsborough, the recycling bins, there've been some major modifications to those recycling bins. They have a plastic recycling bin today that will hold a full week, and it was full this weekend, and they had a little overflow. There was still some room in that. They have a cardboard one that's a full tank long, and it also got full. That department is addressing the problems and making it better, and I'd like to thank them for that.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Bruce W. Caser, five hundred and sixteenth Street, Waterloo. I'm here to publicly put my, announce my candidacy for the L.D. Compliance Commissioner for the City of Waterloo, because in talking with former Buck Clark, I always say, "Buck, you know, this needs to fix, this needs to be addressed, this needs to be done." He said, "Well, Bruce, we're doing the best we can. It's time we did the best we can." Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Bruce. All right. Any other questions, comments for us?
None, no, none of this.
Yes, sir.
David Driver, thirty-one forty-five West Forest Street. I'm wondering where we're at with cameras on the corners and stuff around the businesses. I know that they have banned articles in the paper, but I don't want to let this issue die. I don't need an answer tonight, but we need to continue to look at cameras so that we can start helping solve crimes, prevent crimes. I continue to understand from the paper, et cetera, that Dubuque's had a good result with this, and I know Dan's working hard on it, but I, I again think that we need to think as a citizenry, and you all know I don't like spending tax money, that we put cameras out where we solve crimes, which is gonna reduce our expenses over the long run, and I just want to make sure that that stays in the public mind, in the council's mind, and in the fire and, and police department. Thank you.
You're in fa- you're saying you're in favor of the putting up cameras on businesses?
Well, I am and I'm not, because that doesn't really reflect when that guy leaves